Item three, public questions and petitions. We have received no public questions. Item four, questions to Cabinet members. We've received an urgent question from councillor Champion, which councillor Hampton has agreed to hear. Councillor Champion, would you please come to the table and ask your question?
Thank you very much. Relating to support for designated bathing water status at Cow Tower. Please.
Councillor Hampton, would you give your response, please?
Thank you. Yes, I certainly can provide an update. The council meeting on 24th of June agreed four resolutions relating to the proposed application by the Cow Tower Dippers to defer for the designation of a section of the River Wentsum near Cow Tower as bathing water. And council officers have been working hard to implement resolutions since then. Through the first resolution of the motion, we agree to support the application subject to the health and safety of participants being risk assessed and appropriately mitigated. We understand that applications need to be accompanied by a letter of support from the local authority and each landowner. In this case, Norwich City Council has a role both as the local authority and as a landowner. As local authority, this is relatively straightforward. The city council supports the application. As a landowner, given the council owns the river bed and has a lease over the bank, while supportive in principle, we require health and safety risks to be mitigated. And the council is committed to working with the dippers to try and resolve these. As per the second resolution, the council has been hosting the dippers' public consultation on Get Talking Norwich. This has generated 1,108 responses, of which 1,086 supported the designation and 11 opposed it. And these results will be supplied to the dippers so they can incorporate it into their application. The third resolution in the motion asks Cabinet to agree a policy position on the designation of bathing water within the council's boundary by the end of October. There hasn't been time to capture this as a written report ahead of this meeting and the ultimate deadline, but I'd like to take this opportunity to verbally reaffirm the council's willingness to support any viable applications for areas popularly used by river swimmers to be designated bathing waters, as first established through the motion from the Ocean at Council back in September 2023, as this in essence remains our policy position. The work we have done alongside the dippers on the application has demonstrated our commitment to this and has helped the council to understand the designation process and the relevant consideration for decision makers, including where the council has landowner responsibilities. The particular characteristics of each potential bathing location need to be considered, making it difficult to produce a useful generic policy. We will keep an open mind to the possibility of distilling into policy what has been learned from the Cow Tower experience once the designation process has concluded. And this includes central government consideration of the application and its implementation if bathing water status is granted. And the final resolution of the motion concerned, including swimmers and their groups as stakeholders in relation to the River Wentsum strategy. And we're happy to commit to this as far as contact details are available. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hampton. I expect you have a supplementary from body language.
Well, I was going, I'm just, just in relation to, I've got Peter Smith here, who's coming from the Cow Tower Dippers, just in relation to getting the paperwork forward. Is that something to get when you were talking about the council supporting the application? And you're differentiating between the riverbed and our responsibilities there and our broader responsibilities. The council is still supporting the application going forward for the Cow Tower Dippers, just for clarity.
Councillor Hampton?
Yes, as my responsibility will get in writing to, so you can, maybe it will be a bit clearer laid out. But we are but in two different capacities. As I say, as just the local authority, that's more straightforward than the landowner. The original motion itself kind of added those caveats around subject to appropriate mitigations and safety measures. And it's that, but with the Cow Tower Dippers, we need to do the work on before we can give kind of any sort of outright support. But we are supportive in principle and that work as per the motion will have to be ongoing.
Thank you, councillor Hampton and councillor Champion. Before we go on to the minutes, I should of course welcome, we have two officers here for their first meetings since being appointed. Isabel Britton, who's the Director of Finance and Section 151 officer, welcome. Good to see you here. And Nick Austin, who's the Executive Director for Climate and Environment. Very good to see you here as well. So, welcome. Item five, the minutes have been circulated. Can we confirm, please, that these are an accurate record of the meetings held on the 10th of September and the 23rd of September 2025, including the exempt minutes? Yes, in agreement. Yeah, I'm proposing them. Yeah, fine. Thank you. That was unanimous. We'll now move on to item six, which is the 2025-2030 Economic Development Plan. I will remove, remove, I will move. Has been developed in line with the 2040 Norwich Inclusive Economy Vision, which provides a long-term framework and is based on an in-depth understanding of the Norwich economy. The plan outlines the council's and key public sector partners' actions to achieve the 2040 Inclusive Economy Vision. It recognises that Norwich City Council will be replaced by a new unitary authority and that a mayoral authority with additional powers over transport, economic development, planning and further education will come into play. The plan responds to this change in context, enabling Norwich to take advantage of the opportunities presented by both devolution and local government reorganisation, prioritising actions that can be delivered in the next two years and developing medium-term priorities that are adaptable to a future unitary authority structure. The plan accepts that the council's comprehensive long-term financial planning means that we are in a stronger position than many other councils, but there is less money than there used to be to support economic development. This means that we need to think creatively about the levers available to us to deliver positive change reflecting this. Our economic plan establishes the council's role. As a convener and partner, we will bring organisations that are important within the local economy together, helping to support new connections and ideas. Planner and regulator, we will provide strategic oversight of development and growth in the city. Asset owner, where we are able to, we will explore the feasibility of using selective council assets to drive social value and drive economic growth beyond commercial returns. Funder and deliverer, where possible, we will advocate for the city and develop funding-ready projects to take advantage of public and private sector investment. Advocate, we will promote Norwich's residents, businesses and institutions to showcase positive activity and help attract investment. And finally, place leader, we will oversee measurement and changes in the economy, providing evidence to inform more effective policy and investment decisions. Do I have a second there? Councillor Hampton, thank you. Does any cabinet member wish to speak, please? No? Okay, so I'll move on then to councillor Cat. You have a question. Would you care to ask it, please?
Yes, thank you, councillor Stoddard. It's great to see the emphasis of the Economic Development Plan on nurturing and supporting the creative sector. The Saint Savers Yard Box is, Park is highlighted in this context as a space aiming to provide flexible, affordable and practical spaces tailored to the needs of small businesses, freelancers, traders and creatives. The cheapest containers are currently advertised at £295 a month, which is likely to be quite financially burdensome on some artists and creatives. Are there any plans to provide cheaper spaces for artists, notably those at the beginning of their career, within their, within their box park or elsewhere?
Thank you, councillor Cat. I'll respond. Saint Savers Yard has generated a tremendous response from a very wide range of potential users. There have been over 400 expressions of interest. It would not be economically viable or fair to offer some users a reduced rate against that being paid by their neighbours. And £295 a month, which includes utilities, is probably some of the cheapest individual workspaces available in the city. Meanwhile, creative are the operators of the site and will shortly be holding an open event for those who have expressed interest with a view formally to signing up tenants and allocating units. Tenants will be selected on the basis of the suitability of their business. Some uses are not compatible with containers, affordability and the tenant, and also ensuring that there is a mix of different users to build a vibrant location that will drive footfall to the area. A number of former Anglia Square tenants will be taking space in Saint Savers Yard, with prices per unit no higher than their costs in Anglia Square. Norwich already has several excellent affordable studio spaces for artists in the city, including the Unity Hub artist space within Carrow House, which was originally offered as an alternative to those artists vacating Gildengate House. We'll now move to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you. That's unanimous. Thanks, Rob. Move on now to item seven, the Local Nature Recovery Statement Pre-P publication Agreement. Could I please ask councillor Hampton to move the report?
Yes, this item relates to the Norfolk Local Nature Recovery Strategy, or LNRS, as I sometimes call it. So just to introduce what this is, Local Nature Recovery Strategies were introduced by Part Six of the Environment Act 2021. Norfolk County Council are the designated responsible authority and have led on the preparation of Norfolk's LNRS, whereas Norwich City Council is a designated supporting authority and has been involved throughout the process. The LNRS is made up of a statement of biodiversity priorities and a local habitat map. It aims to outline the key opportunities for and threats to biodiversity in Norfolk and to identify locations where nature recovery could best be achieved. The LNRS is now at pre-publication consultation stage and this paper proposes that we agree to the submission of a letter of consent to Norfolk County Council, i.e. we indicate our support for the LNRS and Habitat Map. Local authorities can only object to the publication of the LNRS under two distinct grounds in the regulations, which are outlined in more detail in the report. And officers believe that the LNRS has fulfilled its statutory requirements and there is no reason that meet the grounds to object. And therefore, there are no grounds to object formally to the LNRS overall at this stage. So although the LNRS is a good review of the state of nature in Norfolk, we do still consider there to be a number of limitations to it, which again are outlined in more detail in the report. This includes proposing measures that might not always be feasible on Norwich sites due to the landscape scale, desk-based mapping approach that has been used. This has particular drawbacks in urban areas due to the tight pattern of development and varied land uses. The letter that we're proposing includes advisory comments covering this and to this end, so that the LNRS can be improved for the implementation and review stages, hopefully. It's important to note, however, that the LNRS is explicit that it is only one source of evidence to be considered alongside other evidence studies, of which there are already existing detailed studies for Norwich. It does not require changes to land identified or remain the landowner or manager's choice, does not place any new restrictions on developing land or local plan allocations. It does not prevent nature recovery actions taking place in alternative locations which aren't mapped either. Once published, public bodies should have regard to the LNRS in their consideration of what they can do to conserve and enhance nature recovery. The LNRS also becomes a material planning consideration for plan-making and deciding planning applications. So given the LNRS is considered to fulfil the statutory requirements, the recommendation is we send the appended letter template to county to indicate support for the publication of the LNRS and Habitat Map. And as I say, this letter includes our advisory comments around some of the limitations to the LNRS. So hopefully, the content of the LNRS can be improved through the implementation and review phases. So that's a recommendation, but I hope we can support the day.
Thank you, councillor Hampton. Do I have a second there, please? Councillor Giles, thank you. Does any cabinet member wish to speak on the item above the line? I will move to questions from political group leaders that have been sent in advance. Councillor Cat, would you please ask your question?
Thank you. Given that most of Norwich is completely absent from the Norfolk Local Habitat Map in terms of areas of particular importance for biodiversity and areas that could become important for biodiversity, and that this map will be used to channel biodiversity enhancement measures, support funding bids and be used in planning considerations. Does a cabinet member recognise how the LNRS could create further tree and nature inequality in our county and further export the much-needed health benefits of living close to nature out of the city into rural areas?
Thank you, councillor Cat. Councillor Hampton, would you please give your response?
Yes, thank you. The Norfolk Local Habitat Map contains measures that were able to be mapped for local nature recovery strategy purposes and contains a layer of potential measures that might be suitable for nature recovery in an urban setting. Further to this, the LNRS statement of biodiversity priorities, the document also outlines a number of potential measures that are unmapped measures across Norwich. These are measures that cover large areas of the city and including, for example, increasing urban tree cover. So just because it's not on the map itself doesn't mean it's not incorporated within this strategy. The statutory LNRS guidance outlines that measures covering considerable areas should not be mapped and should instead be included in the document text. The LNRS is one evidence document to be used in driving nature recovery. And on page 11, it's explicit that other evidence studies can also be used for this purpose and that it should not be used to prevent nature recovery taking place in areas not identified as priority areas in the LNRS. In Norwich, other evidence studies also exist, such as the Greater Norwich Green Infrastructure Strategy, Biodiversity Baseline Study, Norwich Tree Management Plan and Norwich Parks and Green Spaces Strategy, all of which will also be used to help nature recovery across the city. The council also won over £775,000 early this year from the National Lottery Heritage Fund's Nature Towns and Cities project. Nature City Norwich, the project's title, funded for three years, will be funded for three years to 2028, creating a partnership with Norfolk Wildlife Trust, Norfolk County Council and South Norfolk and Broadland District Council. This project will co-create a community-led urban nature recovery network and action plan, placing nature and people at the heart of Norwich's future. It will map and address cities' nature gaps, improving access to green and blue nature spaces and empowering communities to shape a more resilient, biodiverse and inclusive city.
Thank you, councillor Hampton. We'll now move to a vote on the item. All those in favour? Thank you. That's unanimous, confirmed by Rob. Item eight, local government and social care ombudsman and the housing scheme, 2024-25. Could I ask councillor Jones, please, to move the report?
Thank you. So this is a joint report with councillor Padda, who is responsible for customer services. But as the member responsible for housing complaints, I wanted to be the one to introduce this because the focus on the housing ombudsman complaints in this. Over the past year, we've had two complaints that are upheld with the LGSCO relating to parking permits and a reuse and refuse and recycling complaint. But coming on to housing ombudsman, we have had, they have upheld 20 cases, which led to 50 findings. Now, I am clearly disappointed of each and every time we let down residences that are showing these cases. It's concerning that people have to complain to us in the first place as a council. The fact we don't put right any things or manage their complaints appropriately just compounds that problem. I'm not happy with services that are provided to residents in each of these cases. And it's disappointing we fail people in this way. And I do take this incredibly seriously. I've spoken at previous cabinet meetings about our desire for improvement and the actions that we've taken to improve the quality of our services. If people do have cause to complain, we need to put things right and in a timely way. Indeed, at last month's cabinet meeting, we consider annual complaints improvement plan. It's important to note, the ombudsman is currently determining cases that date back around two years. The 23 determinations assessed in this period, five were first received by the council in 2022, 17 in 2023 and just one in 2024. This is a significant time lag. The ombudsman's still considering a number of cases in previous years. And I believe we will continue to receive determinations sometime until we see a marked improvement in these figures. I think that it's important to highlight that that does, that lag time can be very, show significant disparity between our current performance and what the ombudsman is determining. And so despite this, our current performance trajectory is clearly improving. Complaint volumes have reduced significantly by 21% year-on-year, with a 36% when comparing quarter one of 2025 to 26, with quarter one of 2024 to 2025. And property services that accounted for 19 and 22 determinations achieved a 46% reduction in complaints in Q1 of this year alone. These results are a result of, these improvements are a result of targeted interventions, including mandatory housing ombudsman complaint handling training, introduction of real-time complaints performance dashboard and a strong focus on service delivery. And this report reflects the challenges we faced. But we are seeing meaningful progress and our current complaints form demonstrates our commitment to learning accountability and continuous improvement. And whilst I fully acknowledge these ombudsman figures are not where I aspire to be. And as a team, we do ensure we identify and implement any learning, ensuring we don't repeat the previous errors. I don't want this to obscure and overshadow the enormous amount of work that is going on within the housing service, the staff that are putting in improvement plans and working to improve the services our residents receive, the experiences they have, and also particularly the significant amount of work being done by the exec director in terms of complaints handling. We're on a journey. We've got no illusions about the challenges we need to address. But there is a total commitment for us as a team and I know Cabinet will support me on that. And I welcome any comments on this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Do I have a second there, please? Councillor Hampton, thank you. Does any cabinet member wish to speak on the above-the-line report, please? No, I don't think so. Okay, so councillor Cat, would you please ask your question?
Thank you. And I do want to recognise that the exec director is working really, really hard to get on top of these issues. We've, you know, we've all spoken and yeah, completely agree with that. But since 2022, the amount of compensation that's been ordered by the housing ombudsman has risen every single year. It's now £18,940 for the timeline covering this report. And that's a 59% increase on last year, with 43 cases of maladministration found, which is a 60% increase from the previous report. And we know that many of these complaints do date back to as early as 2022, some as late as September 2024. Many tenants' issues have gone unresolved for years on end and that isn't for a lack of tenants and ward councillors feeling as though we've had to, in some cases, bang our heads against the wall in order to be listened to. Can the cabinet member please explain why is it, why it has taken Norwich City Council so long to start to resolve such serious issues in its housing stock and complaint handling?
Thank you, councillor Cat. Councillor Jones?
As I've said, I'm disappointed anytime we let our residents down in each of these cases that went to the ombudsman. We fully acknowledge that service failures are unacceptable and recognise the impact they've had on those affected. Nationally, the ombudsman has determined 30% more cases than in previous years. The introduction of the Statutory Complaint Handling Code in April 2024 has increased awareness, leading to more inquiries and more determinations across the sector. As in the case nationally, repairs account for the highest proportion of determination to the council. The ombudsman has highlighted that the rise in repairs-related decisions is disproportionately higher than the overall increase in case volumes. However, where the proportional repairs cases refer to the ombudsman is increasing and internal data shows a significant reduction in repairs complaints. From 2023 to March of this year, repairs complaints fell by a third from 1,071 to 721. Based on our current volumes, we expect a further reduction of nearly a third in 2025-26, down to 495. Still too high, and I accept that, but we're working on reducing that further. These improvements are working, result of targeted interventions. But because many of the ombudsman's decisions relate to historic complaints, some dating back to 2022, our current landlord performance report does not reflect the progress we're making. We are committed to improving the experience of our residents and the complaint handling code rightly expects landlords to be fair, to put things right and learn from outcomes. We're improving service delivery, we're reducing complaint volumes and resolving issues at the first stage wherever possible. And that includes paying compensation where necessary. I think that's really important. Yes, it's gone up, but actually, it's important that people are compensated. So that's, yes, I wish we hadn't got it wrong the first time, but I'm glad people are being compensated fairly. That's really important. But I also think it's really crucial to focus on that there is enormous amount of work gone into understanding our housing stock in planning what we are going to spend money on in terms of capital works, which will have a significant increase in satisfaction, I believe, for tenants and reduction in repairs that they will need. But doing this is not quick to implement. And this has been a process of, we've started with our work around improving compliance and around safety. Now there is a real focus on repairs and understanding the stock and making it fit for the future. When you've got housing stock the size we have, we need to do it right. We have warm pot of money and we're going to do it so that it works for our residents.
Thank you, councillor Jones. We'll now move to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item nine is the Corporate Risk Register for 25-26 Quarter One. I will remove the report. This report provides an update on the council's corporate risk register as at the end of quarter one of financial year 2025-26. The report recommendation asks Cabinet to note the identified risks and the direction of travel for each risk. The corporate risk register is shown at Appendix A with a separate report included on the exempt agenda. The position at the end of quarter four for the financial year 2024-25 was reported to Cabinet in June. During the summer, heads of service and other risk owners have reviewed all risks and risk registers. As a result, there have been a number of changes to the corporate risk register and these are detailed in paragraph three in the covering report. There have not been any significant changes in the council's overall risk profile at the end of this quarter. The environment in which the council operates remains relatively high risk as the financial environment is challenging, both in terms of the economic and funding position. As a result, the corporate risk register will continue to be monitored and progress reported to Cabinet. Do I have a second there, please? Councillor Giles, thank you. Does any cabinet member wish to speak on the report? No. So councillor Cat, would you please like to ask your question?
Thank you. The report notes the risk, the risk score for health and safety is showing as worsening due to stalled work on mitigating specific health and safety risks facing the council, for example, fire wardens in City Hall and health and safety at our own events. What assurances can you provide that these risks will be brought under control soon and that that stalled work gets expedited?
Thank you, councillor Cat. Councillor Giles?
Thank you for the question, councillor Cat. As part of a wider review of risk registers, the potential impact score for corporate health and safety has been amended to impact five. It is predominantly the impact score, which has affected the overall score in acknowledgement that the impact of failing to address health and safety will always be a five impact. The work to address the Health and Safety Review from 2023 has significantly progressed and the newly established team who manage corporate health and safety across the council have made significant progress on changing the culture in the council towards health and safety. Only four actions from the review remain outstanding and these continue to be worked on. The revised risk has now also included progress against the safety six, which were specific health and safety risks identified by the senior leadership. While some of these risks have been progressed and are showing as green, others still require work to be done. These risks will be revisited at this year's health and safety training for the senior leadership team and thereafter specifically discussed assurance board to ensure adequate progress and mitigation is in place. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Giles. Does any cabinet member wish to speak on the exempt appendix? No. Thank you. So we'll now move to a vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item 10, I will move that we exclude the press and public from the meeting during the consideration of items on the grounds that it involves the likely disclosure of exempt information as specified in part one of Schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972, or it being confidential for the purposes of section 100A2 of that act. Do I have a second, please councillor Hampton, thank you. Now move to the vote, those in favour? Unanimous, thank you. Just switch the live stream off. Good night to all our viewers.